Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council held this Monday, December 20th, 2021, in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM, and just a reminder, I think everyone's masked here, but there is a mask mandate to be in council chambers. Mr. Paulo, I should say, the next meeting, believe it or not, will be Monday, and I have to get used to saying this, January 3rd, in the new year 2022. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
And Ms. Warden is absent.
Yes, she contacted both you and I and said she would not be able to attend this evening. And there is a slight change in the agenda in that the executive session will be inserted between the third reading of Ordinance Number 2021-37 and the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-41, so please note that change. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I should point out, we do have a quorum despite Ms. Warden's absence. First item of agenda requiring council action is approval of the minutes of the meeting held December 6, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestri. Motion to approve by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of December 6, 2021 have been approved. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Hope all is as well with you and family as we are cruising into the holiday season, and good to see you this evening.
Thank you, President Biden, and members of the council, and welcome to our last meeting of the 2021 year. Hopefully, I suppose there is an outside chance that we could have an emergency meeting between the end of the year, but let's hope we don't have to do such things. Report tonight for council starts off with we had an official change in leadership. It happened last Friday on December 17th for our Recreation Division in the city. Jeff Batic, after 29 years with the city of Worcester, has retired as manager of Recreation. Jeff was hired in November of 1992 as a Recreation Coordinator and was promoted to the Recreation Manager in December of 2012. Jeff has been instrumental over the years in Worcester Soccer Program, our city's Bike Multipurpose Trail Program, working with the YMCA over the decades in managing our summer pool and swimming programs, and promoting the hiking program at Worcester Memorial Park, along with managing our city's community center and its various programs. I had asked Ashley Hirschberger, and she accepted back in May of this year, to step into Jeff's role as manager, so there's been good information transfer that has happened over those months. We wish Jeff a happy retirement and thank him for the great job he has done for the city of Worcester. We received confirmation that our CHIP, our Community Housing Impact and Preservation Grant for 2022 and '23, has been approved by the state. Our city's grant provides $350,000 to $400,000 in grants to low-income Worcester homeowners through 2023. Back in 2014, Jonathan Malley, Worcester's Economic Development Coordinator, was asked to handle the joint application for Worcester, Wayne County, and the other cities of Orville and Ripman. Jonathan manages this $1.1 million biannual state program for the group. There will be an insert explaining this in the January 2022 utility bill. And finally, I want to officially say thank you to two of our retiring council members, Mr. Bill Bastancic and Mr. John Ansel. Both have served our city well as at-large councilmen, Mr. Bastancic for the last four years and Mr. Ansel for the last 16 years. Both have provided wise counsel over their time on city council, and we will miss having your insight in decisions. Mr. Ansel, after 16 years of working together, I will miss your voice of reason when looking at situations. You always manage to make good common sense remarks and suggestions when dealing with situations and decisions, and my administrative team will greatly miss your thoughts and your style. We wish both of you the very best, and please stop in the future and say hello. We'll enjoy getting reacquainted with you gentlemen. So with that, Ms. President Biden, I will turn the podium back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do have one petition. It's for a liquor license. If you would, please, Mr. Paulo, read that.
Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Mariola Italian LLC, 365 East Liberty Street, Unit 100, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. They're going for a permit, D5.
And council, you may request a hearing here, being the county seat. Hearing down in Columbus or waive the hearing on this petition. What is your...
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
All right, motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive the hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, then if you would be so kind, Ms. DePaulo, send them the notice that we've waived the hearing. I don't see anyone that signed up for speaking communications from the public, so we'll move right along. I know we had a committee meeting this evening, and Mr. Ansel, would you like to give us a rundown of what went on?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Sanders and Mr. Myers for starting the meeting without me this evening. I was running late, but certainly in capable hands, and I want to thank everyone for their questions over the last six weeks in terms of delving into the preliminary budget presentation provided by both the city administration and the Worcester Community Hospital, and everyone's interpretation and questions have been very insightful, and I think this evening's committee meeting was kind of a final culmination of that review and discussion, and I hope this evening we can get a consensus unanimous approval for the 2022 capital appropriation budget for the city of Worcester and the Worcester Community Hospital. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ansel, and that segues very nicely into unfinished business. The first item is Ordinance Number 2021-37, which despite its long title is really the budget, and I will note that it is with great dismay that this will be Ansel's, Mr. Ansel's, final presentation of a budget, at least for a time being, unless he runs for council again sometime in the future. So before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, in that bittersweet moment, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2021-37, an ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, I want to highlight one of the most reassuring things of the last 16 years serving on council. Certainly, I haven't been the Finance Chair. I would think I was the Finance Chair for 12 of those 16 years. Mr. Brenneman was serving in that role prior to assuming the mayor's position, but the detail and the accuracy of the budgetary process is really unprecedented, and we should be very complimentary, and I validate that commentary by the fact that our revenues are always slightly and manageably understated, meaning at the end of the year, we've done better than the revenue projections, and the operating expenses are always lower than projected. So revenues are always higher than budgeted, expenses are always lower than budgeted, and that physical conservativeness provides peace of mind when managing any budget. You don't want the reverse in that relationship. You don't want revenues under-projected and expenses overspent. That's not a healthy scenario, and a lot of cities operate in that format. So very reassuring, 16 years of ongoing success in terms of the budgetary process certainly earns my confidence and establishes credibility with the current administration and management team. And the same for the Worcester Hospital. We see their numbers year after year after year performing very well, exceptionally well, superlative against benchmark standards of other healthcare facility. Why? Very conservative approach and cash management within that operating entity. Again, very reassuring, the physical responsibility and the ongoing success of the Worcester Community Hospital is certainly validated in their budgetary process also. So I'm glad I got to say that because being a business owner, budgeting is very, very important, and as equally important is performance against those projections and standards. Performance is really the key because some things are beyond your control, and we've had some tough times in Worcester where we've had to make adjustments and make cuts and really get to where we needed to be because of revenue reductions, but they've always consistently managed successfully to project accurately and adjust accordingly. So kudos to the administration and council and the hospital for their outstanding performance in this process, and also gaining the confidence and the credibility of council as a management team. So thank you, fellow council members, for your diligence and the questions and your hard work to ask the tough questions. So that being said, this is the third and final reading this evening. I would motion to adopt Ordinance 2021-37, the 2022 capital appropriation budget.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Discussion, questions? Mr. Silvestri?
Just wanted to thank the administration for all their hard work. I know Andre's team does a lot of work, but throughout the year and in anticipation of budget time, all the managers put in a lot of work. They put a lot of work into the commentaries that we enjoy reading, and I really do. I really get a lot of benefit out of that, and I want to thank the administration for taking the time to meet with me, to field my questions. I just had some concerns. Obviously, anytime we're adding positions, it's something that we take very seriously, and I know the city of Worcester has been working hard to supply the kind of services that we've come to expect in the city of Worcester, and there just comes a point at which it's not wise to continue to strain resources and to try to maintain that. So I just want to thank the administration for taking their time through that. Adding positions doesn't necessarily always speak of lower value. There are times when it's actually a higher value, so for the taxpayers, and I just want to thank them for all the hard work that went into this year's budget, and I'm looking forward to passing it this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2021-37, AKA the 2022 budget, is passed. This is where we have a slight alteration in the agenda in that we would be looking to go in the executive session, discuss personnel, but to do so, I need a motion and a second, and then a roll call.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Bastancic?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
And Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, as of now, we will officially be off the record and headed into executive session. Mr. Scavelli promised me he'd keep it short and sweet, but he wouldn't promise what the other people will do, so he wants to be absolved from any liability. Before we go back on the record, I will need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Bastancic?
Yes.
Or Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
And Mr. Silvestri?
Yes.
We are now on the record and out of executive session. We'll be looking at the second reading of Ordinance Number 2021-41. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2021-41, an ordinance amending Chapter 162, Management Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we had this on first reading last week, and the reason why we left it for this week to look at is there was a lot to read. There's some changes, there are some additions, there were some subtractions, and I think for the sake of clarity, I guess really, most of this has been done to allow us to retain and hopefully entice additional people to come work in our fair city, and the items that are on here are all within the, are all within that 25% of other committees or other cities in terms of what they're offering. And so with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2021-41 passes. New business, Ordinance Number 2021-42. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel. Before I get back to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll look to Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2021-42, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2014-06, by authorizing the mayor to transfer the community reinvestment area agreement from Walnut North Investment Properties LLC to ATO LLC, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is something that we've done routinely in the past as properties that are involved with CRA improvement initiatives. They are often transferred to new owners, and we review the performance and commitments for the CRA obligations, and if the obligations are met, council has traditionally approved such transfers. This is a similar scenario where in 2014, a CRA agreement was completed with Wellert Properties LLC and C. Wellert Properties for a 10-year, 100% abatement for $87,725 of capital improvements associated with the property located on 149 North Walnut Street. We're all familiar, just around the corner from City Hall here. It was a wonderful renovation. That property then was purchased by a new owner, Walnut North Investment Properties LLC, and council approved that CRA transfer, and they've enjoyed the reduction in real estate property tax based on the investment for that term through 2021. There are roughly three years left on that abatement going through 12, 31, 2024, and the new owner is a company by the name of ATO. By the way, that was my fraternity in college. ATO LLC for the balance of the period. They are exceeding the initial employment obligations of two full-time equivalents. They're currently at four. It's a unique startup company here in Worcester, and it's always reassuring now when they're owners and operators of the properties involved. In this particular case, they will be owner-operators of that property, and again, we're all familiar with the property. So very straightforward. The current taxes that we're obtaining for that property, they're about $3,600 a year. The $62,32 is the savings, so with the final three years left, the city will secure about $11,000 in existing taxes and will defer the balance of $18,697. So again, excited about the new expansion, and to my understanding, one of the principals is here this evening, Mr. Andrew Taylor, and their company, they produce marketing video segments for the internet and YouTube, a unique, you know, startup company right here in Worcester, and it's doing quite well, or I'm sure they wouldn't be making the capital investment in this acquisition process. So with that, it might be interesting just to hear maybe a little bit of a snippet from Mr. Taylor, since he is the petitioner this evening. Would council like to hear a little bit about what's going on with that property?
Yeah, it'd be great, absolutely.
Would you please, if interested, Jonathan, you can kind of help him navigate through this process. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it's kind of something very unique and creative. Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you for hearing us. Yes, so we do commercials and things like that, brand strategy and commercials, and we work, I don't know if any of you know Patrick Meehan, who's a wonderful city of Worcester person, and Sarah McLeven, who's a wonderful, so of all the smartest people I know, most are workers of the company, which I continue to own. So anyway, it's been great being downtown, and we just loved it, and we had hoped to find something to buy, and Keith, the owner of Old Street, he was like, let me buy this, so here we are.
Well, good.
Yeah, very good.
Well, thank you for taking the time. Good luck and continued success.
Thank you.
So without further ado, I'm going to motion to suspend the rules of council this evening and move Ordinance 2021-42 to third and final reading.
All right, motion by Mr. Ansel's, by Mr. Ansel to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further questions or discussions? We always like entrepreneurs and new enterprises because you never know what they will turn into, so we wish them much success. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2021-42 passes.
Mr. Taylor, I will note, if you ever need a reference for a person that can do head stands and walk on their hands upside down, I have a good reference for you. Okay.
Always looking for the side hustle, huh, Ansel?
But can you juggle?
It's amazing what a little extra free time will bring.
Yep. Okay, now we have our penultimate piece of legislation, Ordinance Number 2021-43. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2021-43, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Worcester Employees Association regarding wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we saw two weeks ago, we had similar legislation that we had been brought to us related to the police, Police Department, and this evening is related to the Worcester Employees Association, or known as the WEA. Again, this has been put together, this updated proposal has been put together by, you know, much discussion with the representatives of the WEA and the city, and the administration of the city. In the usual process with the city, they have done their very best to make this consistent with what we've done with the police, and again, much of this is a combination of both compensation and retention, and retention of our current employees and also looking so that we can find additional employees as needed. And with that, I don't know that there's really anything incredibly different from what we've talked about two weeks ago, and so with that, I will motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours again, and I look to you for another motion.
With that, I will motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any other comments, discussion, questions? Pleased with the resolution made by the administration and the WEA? Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the employees who have worked so hard over the years to make this city a wonderful place to live, and we thank them. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2021-43, and the final piece of legislation for 2021, and how ironic it will be, Mr. Ansel's swan song in terms of presenting a piece of legislation. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will ask Mr. Paulo to please... Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2021-77, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to execute an agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for the administration of a housing revolving loan fund and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, and I'll note, and I failed to mention this the last couple of times, this is slated for three readings, but both you and Mr. Sanders have been astute enough to get that. So, Mr. Ansel, I give you the floor for the last time in probably in my career here on council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very much appreciated. This is a routine process, whereas council has to approve the eligibility for available state funds that support the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program, as noted in the resolution. We know the mechanics behind it, but we have to approve the potential management of funds through the housing revolving loan funds at the local political subdivision level, i.e. the city of Worcester. The two primary goals of this program are improving affordable housing stock, which is much needed, and providing for affordable housing needs of low and moderate income persons in designated areas served within or by the revolving, housing revolving loan fund. So again, we do this routinely. It makes us eligible to receive funds, to manage funds, to review petitions and requests for funds, and then relinquish funds for these important programs. The amount of funding is to be determined. We know we are eligible, but we don't know what funding levels we'll, we'll receive in 2022. But we will receive some funding levels from these state program initiatives. So that's where we're at. We just have to allow the city the opportunity to establish the housing revolving loan fund program. So since this is a routine matter, we're all familiar with it, I will motion to suspend the rules this evening and move to third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bostansik. Would you please call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, and I look to you one last time, Mr. Ansel, with regard to legislation.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
For the last time, I'll second Mr. Ansel's.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
All right, seconded by Mr. Myers. Any further discussions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-77 passes. All right, this miscellaneous segment, the public, two people have signed up. In case people have missed the nuance, on the sign-up sheet, it's a two-minute opportunity to speak. If you have any questions as to how much time, we do have a handy-dandy clock, and it will make an obnoxious noise when two minutes are reached. The first person to sign up is Desiree Weber. I would ask you to come into the lectern, state your name and address, and give us an idea of what you're going to talk about, and then you may launch in.
Thank you very much. My name is Desiree Weber. I live at 124 East Livering Street here in Worcester. I won't take even my full two minutes. I just wanted to say thank you to the council for allowing public comments, especially in times of lockdown and in times of a lot of issues on council's plate and in Worcester in general, especially over the last year and a half. I wanted to thank council for implementing the policy to allow public comments at such meetings. And I think that I especially wanted to also thank the two council members who are retiring for their service to the community and to the issues that you have guided the community through. So it's really just a thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other individual, and if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry, but to me, it's Adam Kosicki. Please step to the lectern. State your name.
Shit, I don't know what my drill sergeant's called me.
And state your name and address, please.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Adam Kosicki. I live at 1280 East Milltown Road. I work for a company called Open Firearms, full-time, and also full-time father and husband, and I'm at that church. And I'm at church, we've kind of been the last six weeks being a friend. We've been kind of called to service the, or minister to the homeless population here in Worcester. The past six weeks, I was a base, basically, just taking my truck and just bringing the meals on Sunday mornings. And just kind of things I've been noticing, I guess, with the, I'm going to pause on that. Just a few things I've been noticing. One, kind of the cold shelters, we're kind of having like the stringent time limit as to when they can get in. We're finding kind of people out, south cold air, just really frozen behind shelters and stuff. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to kind of ask if the council can, you know, look into maybe having a city-funded cold weather shelter. I know the South has something, but they're under a lot of rules and regulations. Maybe some of them you can get in. If there's not enough time, then you get in, you know, in the evenings. And also, I've been noticing some of the substances, substances they've been using have been coming from some stores here in town. Noticeably, these kind of cartridges that have a, what they call CBD or Delta 8, just a different variant than the THC-9, which is also known as marijuana. I notice that, you know, some of the, some of the shops around here in town, maybe something we could look into. Hopefully, we can get some of those things out of our town that maybe either the homeless or even other people don't have access to those things. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we allow council to weigh in, first of all, I would invite you all to those interesting, a couple of presentations after the meeting, like to make to certain people who I'm going to miss and have grown very fond of over the years. Secondly, I can't believe another year's come to the end, and once again, I couldn't be more proud and pleased to serve with a great bunch of people that sit up here with me. It's quite an honor to work with you all, and I appreciate your time and diligence you put into the matters that we deal with regularly. And people don't see all the things we do behind the scenes. It isn't just show up on first or third Monday and put in our time up here. A lot of people do a lot of homework, ask a lot of questions, meet with people. So again, thank you for allowing me to preside over this august body, and I am glad to be able to call you not only as colleagues but friends. And I hope you have happy holidays, and that 2022 will be a great year for you. Administration, again, wonderful job throughout the year. I know the budget is an onerous task every year, and it comes right in the middle of the holiday season, and all your managers and you rise to the occasion. And as they used to say in a cartoon, thanks and a hat tip to you all, too. And once again, happy holidays, and May 2022 be a wonderful year for you all. That being said, let's give council their last word for 2021, and we'll start out with Mr. Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you. I too would wish everyone here happy holidays, and happy retirement to Bill. Happy retirement to John, if you're retiring. But great leadership from both these fellows. Bill wasn't with us quite as long, but maybe an opportunity to come back in the future. But the planning aspects that you were knowledgeable on was very, very helpful many times. And John just, wow, you've been on council the entire time I've been here. I've been here 12 myself. So time and time again, I kind of maybe rested a little bit, knowing that John was in charge or he was running the meeting, whether, you know, a finance meeting because I trusted him so much. He did an exemplary job. And it was mentioned, too, his no-nonsense, straightaway look at things was very, very helpful to me and I know several other council people. And we honestly will miss you. I hope you, whoever is lucky enough to run into you after you leave here, well, good for them. But hopefully, you can stop by and watch a meeting or two from time to time. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, again, Mr. Bostansik, Mr. Ansel. Again, Mr. Bostansik, Mr. Ansel, you'll both be missed. It was, it's been a pleasure to serve with you during your time here, and I just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and, and happy holidays to them, their families, and their friends. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Couple people I want to thank, I want to just say, it's been very much a pleasure to get to know you, Mr. Bostansik, in your service. You gained a great deal of knowledge over the years you were here, and I think your questions and your insight and research served all of us well while you were on council.
Thank you.
Mr. Ansel, I just want to say, a little over a year ago, you called me and asked me to consider running, and so here we are now. But I've enjoyed serving with you. Your insight and advice on the issues that you've shared with me many times on different things have been helpful, and I'll be sorely missed. So continue to be in touch with you, my friend, but congratulations on your last city council meeting. And also want to say, well-deserved retirement to Mr. Jeff Baddick for his years of service at, of the city. He's done an exemplary job. I've worked with him on a lot of issues that he's been passionate about. His experience will be missed, but I wish him the best in his well-deserved retirement with his new electric bicycle. I know that we'll be seeing him out and about. And lastly, congratulations to Ashley Hirschberger. Look forward to working with her as well. I serve on a lot of different area committees that I will be involved with her going forward. I've worked with her in the past. She's delightful, and I'll enjoy working with her in her new position. So, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Oh, thank you. I too want to thank both Mr. Bostansik and Mr. Ansel for their services to the city, to the residents of the city, and what they've brought to the meetings, the knowledge, the decorum. And I know from, from a financial, finance committee standpoint, yes, we are going to greatly miss you, Mr. Ansel. You are a man who can, I don't know how you can look at what you can look at and pick up as quickly as you can. So like you say, it's, it's going to be sorely missed as, as a finance committee member. But again, thank you both for the services that you've rendered to the city.
Mr. Bostansik?
Thank you. As this is my final meeting, I'd like to say a few thank yous. First, to the citizens of Worcester for letting me have the privilege of being here for four years. I really thoroughly enjoyed my experiences here, and I, I really hope that I exceeded their expectations. I really do. Also, I'd really like to show my appreciation for the council members here, all of you. I think we have a pretty good group of people here. We get along relatively well. Everybody does, I think, I have the feeling that everyone does their homework. They talk about the issues, they talk about the facts. And like all groups of people, we have our differences. But I think the key here is, when we disagree, we disagree agreeably. And I think that's been a pattern four years I've been here. Nobody holds grudges. It's always been polite, no, no hysterics or whatever.
Disturbing?
Well, that's part of it.
Hysterical?
No foot-stopping or whining or whatever you want. But very professional people here, and I learned a lot, and it went a great, it really made a good, a good stay for me here. And lastly, I need to thank the administration. As you know, many of you know, usually the week before council, I'm roaming the halls upstairs, looking for somebody to talk to. And in every case, everyone I've cornered to talk to about an issue or that's coming up, or something, some other issue or problem a constituent has, all of you have been very generous with your time. I never felt like I was being pushed out. I felt you were respectful, and I tried to show my respect as well. And I, I know, I know the administration, like council, takes some hits from the public from time to time. But I have, my experience is working on the inside of city government for the last four years, is that we have a lot of very smart people, very hard-working public service, public servants here. And I've been very impressed with, with everyone here. And I've had some pretty good conversations with all of you. Especially like to thank Jonathan Malley and John Scavelli here. We've had some, have indulged me in some in-depth conversations over the last four years, and I really appreciate the time that you've taken to do that. I've learned a lot. Every time I go up there, I tell people I learned something.
Thank you, too.
You're welcome. So I, that's all. I just wanted to let you guys know how much I appreciate everything.
And how fitting, you get the last word on the last meeting of this year, and your last meeting here in council. So it's an honor to...
Thank you, Mr. President, and fellow council members. While I'm not the most emotional guy, I am pretty sentimental, and the bond that we've created, whether it be a four-year bond or a 12-year bond, has been quite remarkable and very fulfilling and gratifying. And the cool thing about the dynamics of this council, that prior to this, I didn't see quite the dynamics. We have different perspectives, we have different interpretations, we have different ideas, but after discussion and consideration and review, we can consistently achieve a consensus decision. And I'm not saying it's always 100%, but it's pretty darn close after we talk about it and review it. And certainly, there's been those situations where, understandably so, we don't have 100% consensus, but we keep going in a forward, positive direction. And the message received, and sometimes those differences of opinions, aren't necessarily right or wrong. They're just a different perspective, and that's what makes really harmony and different perspectives balance and create thought-provoking, you know, processes that at future decisions may have an impact. So again, many thanks to everyone involved, my peers on council, the administration. It's been very rewarding and easy to work with the group of executives and administrators that we do, because they're very thorough, and they're very good, and they're very objective. And you know, just like Sergeant Joe Friday, well before a lot of people's times out here, "I just want the facts, ma'am." And give us the facts, let us review the facts, and we can reach our own conclusions through our different filters and interpretations. But it's way cool. And I can't believe 16 years has went by, and I spent, much like Mr. Sanders, a year in the audience watching the chemistry of council before I campaigned. So really, I get, I think I've almost 17 years with the one year of council meetings that I had... that I attended. And how time flies when you're having fun. And how time flies when you can achieve success and victories. It's not so fun to lose, but you know what? Our win-loss column for the City of Worcester, former or present council members, is pretty darn good. I think we're Super Bowl champs in terms of city administration and city council. And Mr. Bostansik, congratulations and thank you for your, four years of dedicated service. And I will say, I don't think there's been a harder worker than Council Bostansik through the process. And why the learning curve, your rookie season, is pretty vertical, and he really flattened that vertical learning curve through hard work, tenacity, and really follow-through. So thank you for that. It's been reassuring. The, the dean of council, 24 years, John Albright, trained you well and mentored you well. So, and, and council members, continued success, good luck. You have a great team, new people coming on board, great leadership with president of council, and the team of administration and safety services and PPM. What a team. We have a really world-class team here, the City of Worcester's. And there's no doubt, you won't even know we're gone, because the new people will engage. They're going to be hardworking, and you guys are going to be good mentors and coaches for them as they get into their, you know, beyond their rookie season on city council. So, well done, congratulations. And where did 16 years go? Help me understand that. 16 years. Thank you. Thank you, citizens. Thank you, administration. Thank you, fellow colleagues. It's been a, a real pleasure. Happy holidays to all, and enjoy the special time together, and really anticipate a very prosperous and successful 2022. Thank you.
Bill and John, don't run off, but.
It's banned, it's.
For the last meeting of the last year, and hopefully this year, and for the last time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from you, Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
We all second it.
All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you.